Morning, everybody. We start our meeting with a close allegiance. We have Captain Stacy. Start it for her. Hopefully, she's not muted.
I pledge allegiance to the.
And so we think what we just stands one nation under God, the end of the devil, liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, our each now commissioner's meeting. In attendance, I'm going to try to see who I can find on Zoom. I know we get to share up. Uh, we have. Jude Gates, Jason Smith, Kathy Stacy, Leila is joining us in Zoom. Uh, and then we have superintendent Henry, and then we have some, we have some guests. I don't know who they are, but um. I think they're probably from the companies out from.
Barry Dunn.
Barry Dunn, maybe possibly, but uh, anyway, in, in the room, we have Chuck Nickerson, Allison Kevoski. Robert Burnier just left. We have Christian Coil, country Godu, and the chairman, Brian Turner Chalston. So let's start with RFP openings.
And um, the first is an award, and I move to award the proposal for strategic long-term care planning services master planning to Barry Dunn firm out not to exceed one hundred and fifty two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second, motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Good start.
Okay, um. I think, you know, we saw some presentation before this. I think Barry Dunn's um proposal was really thorough and complete, and I like that. But I, I wonder if at this point, because this is at the um. This started as a project out of the request of the um delegation. And given that we have a uh executive committee meeting next week, I wonder if we should just table this for two weeks on the award, just to make sure we're all on the same page with what they're given because that the price point is so high that we should um. Talk to bring this up at the meeting and just have a discussion to make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of this.
What about? Um, first. First, we saw of this was last week, you know, with the, with the bid prices. And it's about double what I thought it was going to be. Um, I was. I just, it was a little bit, just a little bit of a shock on price day. So my first concern is where's the money coming from? You know, how much of a budget line do we have? What are we overextending or not uh to pay for this? And so I'm concerned about that. And then I, I think that it's deserving of a little extra review by everyone involved, and I'm happy to have, you know, get uh information from what the delegation feels. I think that in general, I like the concept of the long-term planning and the, you know, twenty year look at what our New Hampshire's aging. And there's going to be significant difference in twenty years from now, and we should be prepared for it as people depend on, it's a percentage of people depend on uh this agency to uh maintain available um beds and we're shy now, and it's going to get worse. So I, I think that this study is very important, but I think we need to make sure that we know where the money count is coming from and, and ensure that we really get the value for our dollar. And I also agree, this was the best proposal, uh for sure, you know, for the, from, I, there's no question about which company in my mind. Uh, I'm a little concerned about the money.
And it looks like we have a, we have on the agenda um a line item transfer request, which would be the, what would be to cover the cost of theirs. Did you want to add a?
Okay, so I'll speak to the nature of the line of transfers. So we had ample amount left in the medical nursing supplies line, the one seventeen oh two with three zeros, the org number five nine two oh four for the object code. What happened was, um, we had budgeted some amounts in there for COVID-related supplies, PPE and what have you. We ended up not needing as much for twenty twenty-three. But um, so Jason did an encumbrance to carry one hundred fifty thousand that forward into the line for twenty twenty-four. The states continue to provide supplies and, and we haven't, you know, needed it thankfully. Um, you know, as much, you know, so we haven't dipped into our own money really as far as really the code supplies. So it looks like even if that line transfer did occur and that hundred fifty encumbrance went to the admin service contract line to help fund for doing this study, you know, the vast majority of it, there will still be ample amounts left still in the original four hundred thousand dollar budget amount for the five nine two oh four for the medical nursing supplies line.
So I feel like we're, you know, I mean, this was good. Uh, I mean, this is. There's an opportunity here, so I, I'm not so much worried about the budgetary end of it, because I think we are supported. I think for me that, I think what makes sense is just to make sure, you know, as stewards of the taxpayer dollar, that we have, we, this is a significant contract, and we should just make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of, but I, I think, you know, in terms of this was, again, this started, this generated at, and I can, I was at um a budget discussion um with some representatives, and so drawing from that, this is, that's how um Jason began going through this process, and I think Jason and his team has done an excellent job in terms of vetting and ident- creating the RP and everything. I agree that the price point is, is pretty, there's a little stick to the sticker shop and just um, but I feel comfortable. I mean, I think you know, this is, these are, this is the cost of the business. We should just make sure we get gauged the um opportunity next week at the executive committee meeting to, to address it. So I would move to.
Look, I, I. Before I make a motion, so I, I agree, this was a directive from the delegation, specifically Jess Edwards, um, to, you know, why don't we have this plan? And it's a good idea. There's no doubt it's a good idea. Um, I like the fact that we bounced this off the delegation because we're meeting with them on the end of the month. Um, and give them actually an option whether we either do a line transfer or they may, or we may choose to actually put it in next year's budget. I mean, we're only a couple of months away from starting the for our budget, the next, the next fiscal year. You know, that's another opportunity. So I think it's a wise move. We, we just table this for a couple of weeks. Talk to the delegation when we see them, see what they like to do, and then move on. Yeah. But the plan's good. I think it's important. Um, it's a long-range plan, which is very important, sort of like a master plan and, and, you know, the times. So you kind of move things from a master plan. So it's a smart move. But let's, let's see what the delegation has to say.
But with that, I move to table uh this award for two weeks.
Second, motion to table for two weeks and seconded on motion, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we'll, we'll take this back up in a couple of weeks. Jason, and uh, and then we'll see the delegation. We'll, we'll talk to them.
Thank you, commissioners.
Uh, onto the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes a payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and fifty-seven cents for the period ending January thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second, most have been made and seconded uh on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I go yes. And just briefly, just going back in our packets, we have the practical guidance for healthcare boards of compliance oversight that Jason provided for us. We also have the twenty twenty-three long-term care compliance work plan uh and the twenty twenty-four long-term care compliance work plan, all in our packets, so we can review those. I don't know if anyone's had any questions or time to review that, but we have them in our packet. Okay, now we're going to go, oh, we're already at reports. So anything commissioners would like to, to talk about? But we're not. Um. Commissioner Godu.
So last week, I noted that our, I was not happy with the recruitment. The progress we're making with re- with recruit- recruitment and um was somewhat corrected to understand that the problem is not across the board, and the problem is not with the the actual recruitment activity, but there is a significant problem in the nursing area and LNA's and, and such uh for uh long-term care. And I've come to understand that we are at seventy percent um agency. That's a crisis. That's a spiral that's a significant uh impacts to us. And I think that we need to um, learning that piece of information, I, I called a colleague who runs a um another facility in Portsmouth, um long-term care facility, and they managed to get rid of all of their agency in April of twenty-two. Now, I'm sure they don't have to deal with uh the union issues because that kind of slows us down to uh make moves, but I think that we need to make a significant effort at um taking a look at that and, and doing whatever we can. And I don't have the magic answer at the moment, but um I guess I was just made aware of that we were at seventy percent and we're not, and it doesn't look like that's changing, and it needs to. So I'm just focused on that issue and think that we need to address it.
I think one of the issues is that we are, you know, competing from a uh salary perspective against the agency. I mean, this, there's a, just a population, which is the supply and demand principle, which is the LNA is coming out of school and MNA's, and they're drawn to the agencies because the agencies can pay a significantly greater rate, and we are, you know, to the extent that people care about the bottom line in terms of their, um, you know, what their check looks like weekly as opposed to investing in New Hampshire retirement system significantly hamstrings us. Um, I think in terms of your comparative to, again, the comparative to um to private facility, which doesn't, you know, you're not paying into the New Hampshire retirement system. It is a different beast and a different challenge. What I think, you know, what, maybe what we should be doing is on a more legislative end, things like um notions of um, you know, entering into the New Hampshire retirement system after five years, or some of the bills to that you get vested after five years, I mean, or other um. These are techniques, or these are things that we should be working on and maybe talking to the delegation about this is where we need more advocacy at the state house because um I think we're constantly going to be pushing a rock uphill with uh some of those conditions. Um, despite great recruiting efforts, it's just basic economic supply and demand, you know, principles.
Uh, I'm going to apologize to what both commissioners on their comments. Um, I will say, I know Captain Stacy's working uh state house, there is a bill, as Commissioner mentioned, that you'd be vested at for five years because they the state understands that a lot of nursing homes and a lot of hospitals are short staff nurses. Traveling nurses are just paying like a, a top wage, and where does that end? If we were to, if we were to try to pay employees much more, you know, will, will the traveling nurses just increase theirs? So it's kind of a, it's a more a long-term issue, I think, that needs to be addressed. I don't think it's going to be a simple uh fix. One of them, as Commissioner Foyle mentioned, is maybe you have invested five years in the retirement system because most of these young people coming in looking at being vested in ten years, that doesn't really enter their brain. Ten years is, is an eternity to them. And so it's not really something, like in the old days, I think some of these benefits actually pull people into county government or municipality government, whereas today is a little bit more about, show me the money. Um, and so that's the fine balance, but I, we, both commissioners, we think we're focusing a little bit more and see what we can do to, to help that, that issue, so.
And we have efforts even today, like if you look down on the agenda with respect to the MNA training program, paying for training for so school, you know, there's a.
So future, future discussion, we can focus in on.
Good points, Rachel.
Uh, any other? No, okay, we're going to move on to the Department of Corrections.
Inmate administrative transfer, I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated January ninth, twenty twenty-four. Received in one inmate from Strapper County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B twenty-one, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, on to MNA training program.
I move to approve funding the MNA training program costs through Manchester Community College for employee AR as part of, as an American Rescues Plans Act ARPA project under Treasury expenditure category two per point seven job training not to exceed eighteen hundred dollars as recommended by the senior director human resources.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? I, I'm just going to say, I think that you just mentioned that this is one of the things that we could possibly do to, to help out.
We are doing.
Yeah, so good, so good, good move there. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care, line item transfer. Well, this is, this is going with the, what we talked about earlier on, so this could be another table.
Yeah, move to table, line item transfer.
Second, motion to table, non-debatable on motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Yeah, we're off to the sheriff's office. Brand application.
I move to approve an application for the twenty twenty-four New Hampshire Department of Safety, State Homeland Security, New Hampshire Tactical Officers Association Team Allocation Grant in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-six cents and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the pressure.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
A new tool in the toolbox, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, authorization for utilization contingent grant expense line.
I move to authorize the utilization of the contingent grant expense line under the general fund in the amount of one thousand, four hundred dollars to cover the remainder of it which is the bounce and between for three point O tactical edition with audio kit.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
This is just the supplement to purchase the piece of equipment that is part of the, that will mostly be funded by the grant.
So this is kind of like your county match, and this is why we actually continue to budget twenty-five thousand each year in the general fund for any portion, that's the county match, that's not a fully contingent portion of the grant, because that's over in the contingent grants fund itself, so.
Commissioner, uh, I would do that, so. I didn't know too early.
No, no, I'm all, I'm all side with that.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Yes, we're already at department head updates, and let's start, uh, we'll start with the sheriff. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, nothing really new to report. I mean, uh, last weekend, we were down at Hampton Beach again. And we actually brought the MRAP down there to help activate people that were in their homes and block off roads. Uh, it's a long day, but I mean, we're out there assisting them. My sea coast got hammered big time. I'm sure Kate could talk about that. And otherwise than that, just status quo. Have a great week.
All right, thank you. Um, Jude Gates.
Good morning. Pretty much status quo with us, too. We're busy. Um, we're dealing with the cold. Everybody seems to be handling it fairly well. No, no equipment freezings. We're still dealing with that leak in that condensate pipe down at the jail. Um, we're a little bit concerned about water, chemical water quality, et cetera. We're chasing it. It may be that when the hot water heat exchanger failed, we put a lot of potable water through there, and so there was a lot of oxygenated water going through that pipe. And so there's a lot of pitting on the bottom. We're dealing with it. We're getting close. We've already replaced twenty feet of pipe. Um, yeah, the site visit at wastewater last week with regard to the sewer connection permit went very well. Um. He's got a couple more weeks to review the paperwork that was sent. Person went from the process from what lagoon number one all the way up to the spray irrigation site. So he looked at every piece of equipment. Um, asked a lot of questions of our chief operator, Mark Petten Gill. Mark did a great job. So I'm feeling hopeful that it will be well received. It's an important piece for um the driveway permit for DOT. As far as um I'm trying to think what else I wanted to tell you about. The cranes here, the steel's coming in today. We'll see it going up pretty quickly. Six to eight weeks is about how long it's expected for steel erection, so it's very exciting. I think it's going to start looking very real pretty quickly.
Jude, I, so sorry to interrupt. I um, I can't believe how every driving by almost daily, I can't believe the progress. I really can't believe it, and the way that they are unimpeded by the weather conditions is incredible.
The only thing that slowed them down is these three-inch, you know, rain events, but other than that, they are definitely. Yeah, on the backside of the building, they're almost undercover now, so they're great for winter work. It's going really well. We're pretty excited. Um, DES hasn't weighed in on well number four yet, so we're waiting on that. I have, I have a phone conversation tomorrow with the civils to review all of the data, everything that's been sent up to DES, make sure that um they're ready to give us the permit for well number four. Um, to get off the new building for a moment, we do expect the dishwasher in the dietary kitchen in the nursing home to be completed on Tuesday at long last. We're very excited about it. So I have a lot of people waiting, um, including the Glendale folks. They're very anxious to see that completed, so they're like, whatever you need, we'll get out of your way. Just tell us what you need. We're there. So it's going well. That'll be done pretty quickly, I hope. And um, that's about all we're working on. Gas system was completed last week, couple little wrinkles, but it's going well.
And should that eliminate all any disposal, disposable plates?
Yes, I hope.
Great.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's been a long, long, a long project.
That's it.
Thanks, Jude. Go with Kathy Stacy.
Good morning. I really don't have anything to report. We're checking along as usual. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Jason Smith?
Good morning, commissioners. Um, we have had two medical providers test positive this past week for COVID. Uh, so we implemented surveillance testing. We identified two residents. Um, this morning, we also were made aware of another employee uh testing positive as well for COVID, so um operationally, um, uh, we continue to monitor everything um on a weekly basis and identifying and pivoting to make sure residents are still getting the care that they need. Uh, no cases have been identified in our assisted living community. Um, in addition to assisted living, we continue to wait for the state to conduct their annual recertification survey for licensing. Um, in addition to that, I provided you with a packet of the two thousand twenty-three fourth quarter QAPI meeting and the presentation that was reviewed that identifies the last quarter, um, all the uh initiatives with our quality improvement program. Um, and I just want to say uh thank you to Kendra, who has worked hard to put that presentation together. Um, and so uh from our assisted living community, she's stepped up on it, so thank you.
Jason, sorry, oh, I thought you were done. I was just going to say, I was very impressed, you know, looking at the QAPI plan, I can't believe how much you've got accomplished. It's overwhelming how much was accomplished through the course of uh, you know, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, we. It's a, a team effort for sure. It's a team effort for sure, but uh, you know, we, we've implemented a lot of great initiatives and um, you know, and, and as far as our performance improvement projects go, we're setting the stage for two thousand twenty-four, which will be uh submitted actually to Leila later this week um to be presented to you, but on the top of the goal is staffing. Um, staffing uh continues to be a challenge, and I know that we work diligently with human resources to address that. Um, but also with that being said, all the other counties are also struggling with staffing too, and they are using agency. Um, and you know, there's that balance of, yes, we can reduce our staffing, but then that could impact resident quality of care um and our overall staff rating through the CMS five-star system. That is a good marketing opportunity, and it shows the dedication to services that we provide. Um, in addition to that, I also provided you with the updated uh January employee newsletter, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jason. Jason, Jason Henry. It's tough to see you. You look really small in the, in that room.
It's a big room. Uh, happy to see you all. Not much to report, no COVID inside the building. I've been out for the past couple of days. I had a little minor procedure on Monday, so been working from home. Uh, only I did get a call from Representative Tony, guy's last name. There is a, yes, there is a, on Friday, there is a hearing on a constitutional amendment under, for slavery. Um, wanted my opinion on it because the way it's being presented, it would affect all the jails, because they don't, basically it's coming across that they won't, don't want to have um sentenced inmates to be um, have to work. Um, because the law states right now, if they're sentenced, it sends to hard labor, whatever that means, hard labor. Um, and they equate it to being slavery. So we had like a long conversation about it because of what it was, if we couldn't use sentenced workers, then we'd either have to hire outside or more staffing. Um, I told them, you know, what the, the jobs are there inside here that they do is, it's, you know, kitchen work, laundry work. Same thing you would do if you owned your own house, so I equated to that. I do have to run up a bullet points today so we can talk to it on Friday. Um, I don't think we'll go anywhere because it's a constitutional amendment. You need two-thirds majority to pass anything, but um I will have that bullet points to them um after I get off the meeting with you guys.
So we're not like Cool Hand Luke. We are Building Rose.
Yeah. No, uh, and that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Um. Allison.
Um, oh, thank you. Um, we, um. Eileen will be reaching out for the next quarterly newsletter to one of you or to Leila. Just be aware of that. She's starting to put together the next quarterly newsletter. Gallagher, our insurance broker, will be out today to meet with Chuck, myself and Julie, just to go over um what our trends are, what we're looking for for next year, and just, uh, just touch base. Signo will be represented there, Northeast Delta Dental. So we will have them um in the HR building at one o'clock today or two o'clock today. I can't remember which, but yeah, they are.
Can I ask you guys a quick question? To just hit you like a lightbulb moment. What was the healthcare increase overall year over year? I'm just curious because in my town, rural departments, they don't have like one percent.
So for the county established premium, we didn't do any changes, but there was, I think, um three to four percent increase on the Legion plan side, and actually dental sign increased this past year, and they, they, no, and actually there's a trigger in the contract that there's some crazy increase like that, then unfortunately, you know, Parvick gets more than burn and gets put on the uh, the union uh teams as employees.
Okay, but I'm sorry to interrupt.
But yeah, so, so I'm not, I haven't seen where premiums are going. I, we haven't been told yet.
Yeah, we're going to be.
So Legion plans are a fiscal year plan.
Yeah, I was just curious, that's all. Sorry, Allison.
No, we also use the health fund to kind of offset anything, and we've done that. Um, but, you know, our stock loss is a little bit higher this year. Uh, the um claims on that are a little bit steeper than anticipated, but not really because we've trended so well for the last three years, so it kind of is that bell curve that will happen, we'll get it a year.
Plus we have the COVID, but still we come out of that because people delayed stuff, so.
It seems like sometimes the default Northeast medical CPI that you see Signo and others by quote is, or even Gallagher, and we're between like five and seven percent annually. That's generally what you, you kind of hear from them. That was actually before the COVID years.
Yeah.
It was something like that.
So that's what we have. We've gotten confirmation dates uh for February for those uh from the legal attorney to finish our harassment training, so I'll be reaching out to the um ODDs to identify those employees, to get them to those trainings, because this will be uh the last time we will have.
How many people do we have?
We have seventy. We have.
How many people need to take it?
Seventy, seven, zero. So we have
Need to take?
Ten, uh, about ten of uh managerial's that have to go through supervising managerial's and the rest are staffing. So we'll get through it. Um, I figure we'll have four uh sessions for the open uh personnel and then one session to get through those ten um supervisory managerial, I'm hoping for.
Okay.
Um, just waiting on um, just, just different stuff that's going on. The podcast, we'll do it. HR highlight this. I'm waiting for Autumn to tell us what we're going to be talking on, and then we'll get that underway. And uh, I'm working with our HR supervisor on some workers' comp um things that have come up, just to kind of see where we are with those. But other than that, we are um UKG. We're in line to go live on one twenty-eight. I know Ben and Julia are working on different communications that one set will go out to the managers and supervisors, and another set will go out to all of our staff, so that should be done, I think, Friday and pushed out by Monday, so watch for that. Yeah, yeah, so, well, it will, we'll see. Chuck and I will be like, man, we'll see what happens. Chuck and I will be like, man, we'll see what happens. It'll be that first payroll or two that I'll be anticipating for both sides of the house to make sure, because they're perfectionists, I will say. HR is, and I know the payroll group, they want it 100%, but we know there'll be a few little bumps, but we'll get through it. So that's all I have.
Okay, thanks Allison. Chuck?
I'm just echo what Alice was saying as far as that continuing transition workforce central UKG dimensions and pro. Um, yeah, 1/28 is the first punch. So for all of us, you know, all individuals who punch, that'll be the first time the time clock or, or actually, you know, the PC punchers as well. That'll be the first punch in the new system itself. Uh, we're setting up meetings with, uh, managers from different departments as far as trying to, you know, kind of like that train the trainer kind of, kind of thing. Try to get them familiar. There's already been some meetings with departments already, especially on scheduling. Uh, I guess schedules in transfer from the current system. So, um, Ben had already been meeting with other departments about, you know, making sure that schedules got in. Um, let's see, the, just reminder that the second quarter delegation executive committee meeting is next Friday, 9:30 in the Hilton auditorium. Um, tomorrow is another quarterly, not quarterly, but monthly meeting. This one for the New Hampshire Association of Counties up at Primex. Um, so the executive committee meeting for that is 10 AM. Um, as usual, anytime that it's a month after following quarter end, it's fun time with grant filing, so I'm in the middle of that. Um, let's see. Um, again, regarding other NHAC activity, there's lots of bills that we're looking at. Thank you Kathy Stacy for spearheading that committee. Um, I testified yesterday on House Bill 1641, which one representative was trying to have the, it required that anyone who's got a parking lot of 80 spaces or more, that's mandated to have half of that covered with solar canopies. So unfunded mandate, a lot of the individuals.
Hold on that.
A lot of individuals on the committee expressed that concern. Oh, you know, and the, the, I think sole sponsor is trying to like base it off some French laws, something like that, that was going to play. And all sorts of different exceptions were brought up as far as what about this or that by the committee members. And obviously those things weren't covered in the bills. So hopefully that doesn't go anywhere. Hopefully it just gets an inexpedient legislative.
Yeah, I'm pretty worried if I had a split campaign.
So, yeah, so for us, we'd be looking at right here, the parking lot out back. That's one count. I don't know, again, from this proposed law, if even the, the parking lot over by corrections, if there's enough thing, the sheriff's office spots and all that, if as one, that could be another one. And obviously with the new building, that would also be a third that would have. So hopefully that goes nowhere.
That's an unfunded mandate.
Yes, and that's the thing I opened up with as far as, as the NHAC testimony.
All right.
Attorney, Conway is.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Go ahead, Chuck.
I failed. Okay. Um, let's see, and then there's another, um, bill. There's another bill that I'm, I'm more concerned about. I'm actually more concerned from the standpoint of the towns and cities. Uh, Senate Bill 533, that's the one that the Bank Association before to require all investments in the PBIP to be in New Hampshire banks. Now, the problem with that is if it, to me, it's just a proposed bill to basically, one, it's, it's restrict competition because the banks don't want the competition.
Yeah.
Two, if you require the PB, you know, investments only being New Hampshire banks and if you're investing in PDEP, you have to pay, you know, because there's a money managers, um, the investment managers, there's a small, you know, measured fee that you have to pay. So this would essentially kill the public deposit investment pool because this can out the middle person, PDEP and investment banks. If that's what you're going to be required to do if you're, you know, a town or a city or a county.
Count out premium per se?
It said banks. I didn't believe that the legislature says banks.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, so.
So, so basically, that would leave a, that would leave a budget hole in lots of towns and cities that invest their tax monies to get, again, great returns. And their return is always better than any of the mutual fund indices that invest in the same kind of items, you know, commercial paper, T bills, what have you. And so if you're now going to be stuck with bank deposits, then you're looking at maybe some of that's eight times less return.
Yeah, that's not good.
And what? So, so one argument is that the investments in PDEP are not fully collateralized like you're, like the bank. Now, the thing is, there's never been an issue with, to my knowledge, of anyone pulling money out of the public deposit investment pool and having issues with liquidity. That's one thing about the, the pool is very liquid. You know, dollar in, dollar out, is kind of what they say. But so towns and cities will put their tax monies in there, earn a return and then be able to immediately draw it out. No penalties because money's held up in CDs or whatever, because you did that to get better rate of return. So where towns and cities going to go to, to fill up a budget, revenue hole in their budget?
Yeah.
To me, it's either you might end up having to raise taxes or you can reduce services. And that's not really discussed in the 55 page report that this one person outfit did as a, so, a kind of report for the Bank Association that's been provided to the reps and sent.
So the municipal associations will probably.
So, so the standard operating procedure of the NHMA of this, of that association is that unless something directly affects the association, they do not take a stance on it. I guess that that's in statute. Um, the NHAC doesn't have that. So we can testify, like I can testify on behalf of all the 10 counties. All 10 counties have to show up individually. So I hope that individual towns and cities try to educate their local representatives and come to testify.
Do you know when that bill is up?
January 30th. I forget which, uh, which rooms it was exactly. At the LOB, but I will, Legislative Office Building, but I will be there. I very. And this is actually having in between quarterly meetings for the, for the advisory board meetings for the public deposit investment pool. So the pool itself has not been able to vote to take a position on it. Of course, interestingly enough, there's, by statute, two of the, um, ones at the, at, at the table on the advisory board are from the Bank Association, so. So I guess that'll be two built in no votes for maybe an official position against, but we're not meeting, the advisory board is not meeting until February. So, yeah, so I will be there and, and hopefully, uh, others who have testified haven't experienced the like two to three hour lays that I did yesterday for testifying, but that can happen with certain, certain bills. Yeah, so it was all day, almost all day kept fair yesterday, but.
Do you have anything else, Chuck?
Um, no, I'm going to have stuff there that's obviously early in January, mid-January, but departments, I know some of you were already looking forward to the next budget cycle, but start thinking about that because the end of March, it kind of, kind of creeps off on you quickly. End of March is actually the deadline in statute to have the numbers set for the, uh, department proposed budgets, so.
Very, very good. Um, just for the record, we have Pat Conway, uh, and Robin Burney are back into the meeting. So at this point, I'm going to ask Pat if she has anything, uh, for her committee because we're just finishing up, but perfect timing for you, Pat. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Um, no, I mean, we're really busy here as usual, but things are going well. Um, we're still trying to fill a couple of attorney positions and haven't been successful in doing that yet, but we're working on it.
Good.
Um, I did want to thank the Sheriff's Department for, uh, we had a hearing in State versus Jay Maderos last week. It was a defendant charged with negligent homicide, um, against Trooper Jesse Sherrill, Staff Sergeant Jesse Sherrill. It was a plea and sentencing hearing and there was a lot of people in the courtroom, um, including very many state troopers. And so the security was great. Uh, the sheriff was there himself. Um, and just to make sure things were running smoothly. So I, I did want to thank them for that and helped us keep families separate and, um, all those kinds of things that we have to do to maintain order in the courtroom. So thank you, Sheriff.
Very good. I, I've noticed a pattern at the sheriff's office, wherever is there needed some extra help, whether it be dispatch services or again, the flooding, you know, he's there. And, um, he's willing to help out, which is great. So that's good to hear. Uh, Robin, I'm going to let you, do you have anything in IT world?
All kinds of things in IT world. Um, we're working on a few projects this morning over at the jail. Um, and we have a few other things that are in the beginning phases and at the end of their phases. So we're, we're going to hope to start some new stuff and close out some projects in the upcoming weeks. So, that's it. Thank you.
Very good. I think I got everybody. We're going to move on to, um, blue business. Anyone have any blue business? The only thing I wanted to say, because I spaced it early on, is, um, the last meeting after our regular meeting, um, we actually had the Eagle Tribune come over and do a, um, a presentation of our, I think it's Apex, right? Uh, Jason Henry, is it Apex?
Apex, yeah.
So I want to thank Jason Henry, his staff for setting that all up. Um, it was really interesting. We actually had the reporter, um, put the, the visual, the goggles on in the backpack. So she actually went through. And, um, I, you know, they asked me to do it and I'm like, I can watch here. It's a little bit better for me, but she did a good job. You know, it's a, it's a great program. Hopefully the commissioners will have a chance to see it eventually too. Um, they fine tune a lot of stuff. We also saw the superintendent don the, the goggles in the backpack. Uh, the only thing that went wrong there was they, the reporter for the Eagle Tribune is, I don't know, maybe 411? And it didn't adjust the height, so poor Jason had to go to the shooting range and the visual, the visual part of it. And he actually had to kneel to actually hit targets, which was, if you were there to see it, it was great because he's got the goggles on, we're watching him. So we have some pictures.
Did anyone capture a video or?
I think we may have, right? Jason, we may have something, but it was, it was, it was great to see. Uh, it was a great investment. Um, I haven't seen the, the news report piece yet. I don't know if it's out yet, but.
Oh, yeah, she, she called. She wanted to see if she could get a little video off the, um, computer screen. So I know Lieutenant Wardens working on that.
Yeah.
Yes, and I think some of it was videoed. If you don't, if you don't do the sizing right, um, even when you went on the housing unit, I steal the inmates, they were all, um, dwarfs. Because they're all at that height when I'm dealing with them. It was rather interesting. So if you don't set it up correctly, it's, it looks funky.
Sort of reminded me like of a King Kong movie. It was fun. It was fun.
How many photos, uh, unflattering photos? Jason Henry has a rollover sticking by Ethan's land.
Now we have, now we have some imagery in the hole against them. So, okay, that's all I wanted to say, but now we go to.
Sorry, just one quick thing. Um, so AHAC, uh, we are putting on, this is a brand new thing, a legislative conference, um, late February, February 26th. And so it's, uh, it's, it's actually already going to be a positive moneymaker actually for the, uh, association. But, um, so we're looking to just promote that conference again. So it's like the inaugural one itself, um, educate legislators or, 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 you know, other individuals who approve, make decisions for political subdivisions to be educated on what's important, you know, what kind of things affect the county as far as legislation.
I honestly feel that NHAC has done a tremendous job over the last couple of years, specifically on issues dealing with the county. I, I see that we have a little bit more sway. We're better organized, um, and we're getting in front of these legislators so that we can let them know and Kathy spotted that, so congratulations to Kathy. But, you know, we're, we're in the forefront, uh, letting legislators know what we need as, as counties. And so they're really doing a good job. So this is just a new tool that'll get us in front of them again, uh, which is great, so.
And there is a link, I believe, off of the New Hampshire Association of Counties website, uh, that has the agenda as well, but I think they're also going, I did ask, uh, Kate Horgan yesterday when I was at Concord, uh, as far as there was like an official doc, but that could be shared out, um, to, to try to get individuals to, uh, to register. I think it's like, uh, only $20 or so, I think, to register. And, um, and I think that if it was difference between maybe getting some other additional legislators there maybe to attend, that because already we've had some, um, some other like corporate sponsorships that came in more than was expected, um, that we could actually do some, uh, comp arrangements that they, they could attend because we're trying to hopefully get like 100 total attendees, so.
Good luck with that. Uh, anybody else from the public? I don't see anybody, so if I just want to make sure I'm not overseeing it. I don't think we're probably going to be doing a call for public comment. And if there is none, we're going to go into non-public. I want to thank, oh, hold on a second, I forgot. Leila. Leila, I, I want to ask you if you have anything you want to add. I know Leila's at home. She was trying to have a vacation week. And of course she's, she's still worked through some of that vacation.
Part of it.
Yeah.
The number of emails throughout the week thanking Leila for your efforts.
But I didn't want to over.
On your non-vacation.
Yeah.